Call meeting to order.
Copy.
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Kinley?
Yes.
Testor?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Copy.
Section 1, is that consent agenda?
Make a motion approved, consent agenda.
Hey, second.
Call it.
Copy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Kinley?
Yes.
Testori?
Yes.
I don't have any public comments. Sue, did you have something for this?
Yeah, I just wanted, before we start discussing the new business, if it would be okay with the council, I thought one of the things Jill and I were discussing is moving forward, perhaps we would discuss putting things, new business would be for discussion, for amendment, for further investigation, and then at the next meeting would be action, to take action, unless we're, you know, in a rush to get something done, then maybe take action at night, but otherwise this way, since we're going to be bringing a lot of new things to you, that this provides you then, a couple different chances to address and change and then, rather than getting something the Friday before and, you know, having to try to make a decision that following Monday, so if that's all right with you, that's, you know, something that I think would work for us, to help you and us, you know, bring things to you, give you a chance to review it, to change it, to get public input, and then address it, rather than trying to do it on Monday.
I agree.
That work? Okay. I appreciate that, so that was kind of my intent with what we introduced for tonight, is this is a draft for discussion, so you can hear what staff is thinking and why we're proposing it, and then we can go from there.
Anything else?
No.
Section 2 is unfinished business, do we have any unfinished business?
No.
No? Section 3, new business ordinance resolutions for initial consideration.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 984, setting minimum fines and authorizing settlement of violations prior to suit being filed.
Is that what you wanted to do tonight, was to make them?
You can make a motion in a second, and then during the discussion portion, we can talk about it. Now, that doesn't mean you have to vote on it, you could just discuss it without the motion.
And then move the table.
Yeah.
Sure.
Table lay over. So the discussion.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll jump in then, okay. This first ordinance, and there's three, I believe there's three different ordinances in front of you, although, this is personally my error, only two are noted here on the new business, but we're going to get to all three and discuss and seek your input. The first ordinance is called an ordinance setting minimum fines and authorizing settlement of violations prior to suit being filed. It's two pages, it's a lot of words. The next ordinance is called an ordinance establishing a minimum fine schedule for certain violations of the pharmacy code. That is more of a chart, okay? So what I would do is, I'm going to talk a little bit here about how these ordinances came about, I'm the primary drafter of these ordinances. The first one, setting minimum fines and authorizing settlement of violations prior to suit being filed, is, I view it really as a housekeeping matter, something to codify.
I don't think I have that. 984?
Yeah, our 984 looks like this. No, that, yeah, that's in, let's see. And I, your 94, this is what's in your packet?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Just a schedule.
I thought we had made copies of this.
Do you need them?
No. I thought you did. All right, sure, make a quick copy.
I'm sorry.
The numbers are wrong, so if you could just disregard the numbers, she was going to make you a copy, and she'll do that right now. It's mostly just one page, because the back page is just like a chart, so as she thinks it, um, sorry about that. I knew that the 984 was wrong, but I thought she would make copies. You didn't, you want?
Okay, I'll just give a moment of background, and, uh, what this does is, a couple things, one, it authorizes the city council to set the minimum fine schedule, which is the next ordinance, which I believe you have, and that's really sort of a simple chart, it's easier for all of us on staff and everyone to understand what the minimum fines are. If you wanted to change something, you could simply adopt a revised fine schedule in the future. It's more of a housekeeping matter, but I'll get to the fine schedule in a moment. The other thing that the ordinance authorizing settlement of violations prior to suit is, codifies something that may be considered inherent, is that the city's authority to settle ordinance violations without having to actually file a complaint in the courthouse. And this is something that the chief and I and Sue have been working through here as we, you know, gear up ordinance enforcement of a variety of offenses, is a mechanism to enforce the ordinance for the officers to write a complaint, and then if there can be a resolution, without having to overly engage me and my office, and without having to file anything with the courthouse, and what that all entails, then there can be a settlement of resolution, fits hand in glove with the minimum fine schedule. And this really just codifies that, and allows that process to go full.
Did I bring this up something in one meeting before? Because I brought this up in the past about where, I think when I was in Chicago a couple years ago, that they said something about this, where you can have an attorney, and take not only just Farmer City, but you can take Leroy in D. Land, and bring him in here and for all ordinance violations, and kind of it's kind of court.
That would be administrative adjudication, and that would be administrative law judge, and that would be a neutral attorney that you would hire to come in, and yes, I would pursue that, but it's going to take time. I would like to probably work with a nearby community, such as Mohammed, Clinton, Leroy, somebody, where we could share the costs. I've done that before, where we've done several communities, and then each month it's in a different community, and, you know, yes, but that's a little different than this, it's a further process. Right now, this would help us immediately.
Start.
Until we can start with the administrative adjudication.
So this thing, there's really no, I mean, it's just a minimum on fines, correct? Where's the max? Is that what the max is on fines?
Actually, I believe the max is $750.
$750.
So, so let me ask you this, on, and I'm looking at this, I think this says 14 days, 14 calendar days?
Yes.
So, how long do they have after they've been, quote, warned, before they get a fine? Or do they get a fine?
Usually they get a 10 day, a minimum of 10 days' letter before they get a notice, and then they get another, yes.
Do they get the problem, or whatever they got going on, correct?
And it might depend on the ordinance that's, the particular ordinance in question. Sometimes if it were, for example, a, what we believe, what we call a traditional criminal, such as a theft, there, the crime has already been committed, and there's no sense of warning, it's simply, okay, the officer has to make a decision, what do I do? And, you know, chief, this is in your bailiwick, but I'm a little bit familiar with this, an officer has to make a decision right there, okay, do I do a full-blown arrest for state charges right now, do I do some type of, or do I let them go with just a verbal warning, or do I do nothing, or do I provide them with a citation, an ordinance citation, which is kind of a middle ground, certainly not a full-blown criminal charge, certainly not an immediate arrest, and take them to the jail, but it's a citation of an ordinance violation. It's another tool that officers can use to enforce the, what you call sort of the criminal statutes, although they're not enforcing, when they write an ordinance, it's not enforcing the criminal code, they're actually enforcing the ordinances that you've passed, which in many ways mirror the criminal code. And so there, there's no warning as in a 10-day, it's really-
Sounds like a code violation.
That's right, that's a code violation, like junk and debris, or along those lines. There's a citation provided, and yes, then they're given 14 days to decide, I am really guilty, I don't really want to fight this, that's not worth my time and money, and then they're given 14 days to come to the police department and pay the fine, the minimum fine schedule, which is the next ordinance that we're suggesting, and then it's done. And that's again, another enforcement tool that police officers can use.
Then after the minimum fine, say they don't, come in and in 14 days, and everything, you start increasing the fine up to the $500, $750?
Well, at that point in time, at least the way this is structured, then if they don't pay the minimum fine, then the enforcement is to, for me to file a complaint with the circuit court of DeWitt County. And then, the minimum, you know, there, yes, this is the minimum fine, but they subject themselves to the possible penalty up to the maximum, which is $750 per violation.
Per day. You could also do it per day.
Correct.
If you really wanted to.
That's correct. Each day, again, we need to distinguish between a criminal citation versus sort of code enforcement that we call, it's code enforcement, they subject themselves to a penalty for each day they're not in compliance. Did I answer your question? I don't think I did.
You're answering my question. Yeah. Yeah, you're answering my question, and that's why I'm asking this, is if we, they don't, you know, because it is, just because they get by, but they come to the point where they have to pay more, and they start realizing, oh, court costs, do they have to pay court costs?
Yes, sir, yes. If they don't pay after the 14 days required, and then we have to file with the circuit court, yes, if there's a finding or plea of guilty in the circuit court, then the circuit court clerk will impose costs, so yes.
Where does it say what the maximum fine is?
Uh, it is, it's in the ordinances that you already have, and I don't know what the exact section is. Yeah, it's also set by statute.
Yeah, statute sets it.
But the ordinance has it for $750. There's a, there's a general section in your ordinance that talks about, if no specific fine is stated, then it's a minimum $50, maximum $750.
We can't go above-
Per violation.
We can't go above $750 unless we are a homeless community.
I believe that's correct, yes.
But that could be per day.
Yes.
Yes, it is, again, if it's, for example, a code violation, that's a per day violation, that is correct, and-
Could also be per violation per day, let's say you have three violations on the property.
That's what I want. People need me to work on this.
And I have, yeah, I've done it, I've asked for and received fines of, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, quite frankly, and for the purpose of trying to enforce compliance.
This, this list of offenses, I mean, these are very general, in most part, it's their keeping of dogs and cats.
Well, yeah.
Is that seven numbers of dogs and cats?
Yes, and let me, let me explain that a little bit more detail. This is simply a reference to a specific section of the Farmer City Code, and with a section title, and then the minimum fine. So obviously, this is, this what you have in front of you, is not the actual section that deals with, for example, trespass the land. There's a whole paragraph that discusses what it takes to be in violation of the trespass the land. This is simply a reference to that.
Just helps us see all the fines together in one place with the back of the book, but then it does, you can go back to any section, and it's in there. So then it would define keeping of dogs and cats, and how many somewhere else in the book.
Yeah, some here have read it, so.
And I'll also point out that, again, I just created this by identifying, okay, what's the section, what's the section title, and then what is the minimum fine? And I want to be clear, this is not what I think the minimum fine should be, this is what your current ordinance says your minimum fine is. Let me be more specific. Sometimes your ordinance says, right in the, right in the, right there in the section regarding, for example, trespass the land, the minimum fine is $50. Sometimes it doesn't say what the minimum or maximum fine is, then it defaults to another section, which is generally says, if no other fine is specifically stated, the minimum shall be 50, and the maximum 750. So what I did is, I simply plugged in the minimum, if it stated what a minimum was, or if it was silent as to the minimum, I transpose the $50, because that's what the ordinance otherwise applies. And there are some variations, obviously, the section 136.06, receptacles required in public area is a $100 minimum fine, and then, and then some others, for example, the 90.10, animals removal of excrement, is actually a $100 minimum fine. That's not my interpret, that's not my opinion, that's what the ordinance already says. And through this process, you, the city council, you can change the minimums. If you don't like that minimum, you think it's either too high or too low, you can change it.
What concerns me is the per day fine. How do we determine per day here for offense?
Okay, if it is a, what I'll call a criminal violation, for example, trespass the land or a theft, okay, that's per occurrence, and if there's a theft, we understand what a theft is, that's a, that's a one-shot deal typically, okay? A trespass the land is typically a one-shot deal, so that's one day. But if we get into ordinance enforcement, or code enforcement, I should say, code enforcement, whether it's building codes, or whether it's junk and debris, that is where it's an ongoing violation. There's clearly something that should be cleaned up, I'm speaking in generic terms, not in a specific, there's something that needs to be cleaned up, it's not in compliance with the Farmer City Code, they're given the proper notices, they're given the proper warnings, directed to clean it up, or begin abatement, and most often, and this goes to the enforcement side, there's no even effort to begin the abatement process, and then at that point in time, after the notice period and warning period, typically 10 days falls, well then, each day after that is a separate violation.
I will tell you, from a staff perspective, my philosophy has always been, I would prefer that the property be cleaned up, rather than collect fines. So I know that the chief and I are both willing and able to work with property owners, because we would prefer to extend deadlines, to help them any way we can, to find out how to make the cleanup happen, but it's a good tool to have if and when we need to, you know, bring the hammer down, that something needs to be done. So it's not something that we're going to just jump in and start doing. Typically, I don't do per day, unless it's really something that's given us-
I'm not supposed to wake people up, I don't want to bankrupt a person with fines, either.
Right. Well, a lot of times you can't, you know, there's difficulty in collecting as well, so. I'd rather see the property cleaned up.
I'm sure they'd rather clean it up, though. It'd be funny for my questions.
Be smart on their part.
Any other discussion on this 984? I don't think so.
We'll bring it back, cleaning them right in the mail.
Do we need to?
Make a motion to table. Oh, yeah, we have it, now table it.
Move the table. Motion for ordinance 984, second.
Call it.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Kinley?
Yes.
Testori?
Yes.
Copy?
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you. Move for approved ordinance, ordinance 985, ordinance admitting ordinance chapter 91 to nuisance ordinance.
Second.
This is an ordinance that we've just started working on, as you can see, it's a work in progress. Again, we're trying to add things to our current nuisance ordinance that provides us the tools to, you know, work with properties, for example, in the first part, adding some conditions, whether it's certain instances of things, you know, a former auto repair business, it's not in business anymore, but has things on its front porch, it's referenced here. There's been a lot of issues with building supplies, construction materials, landscaping materials, that are nicely stacked, but still really don't belong in a residential zone area. The other section is dangerous buildings. Yes, we have something that references generically, if it's kind of unsafe, this is a little bit more descriptive, helps us, you know, mostly helps staff when they have to decide, okay, how are we going to notice this, how are we going to cite them? And then the last one is the same thing, we do have a weed ordinance, we talk about the height, but sometimes it can be, well, this is my, you know, my prairie garden, well, is it really a prairie garden? And really, it's just a home for rats or snakes, and so that, that's what that section gets to, is, you know, trying to define, because we do define certain weeds in our code, but maybe it's certain kinds of weeds that are actually a further hindrance or, you know, nuisance. And then finally, we're still working on the tree issue, as you'll see, there's a couple different suggested languages, because you'll see some properties that have the tall weeds, and brushes, and bushes, and then you see these saplings, and some of them are right up against the foundations, some of them are all over the place. Well, we're trying to work through that, and are certainly open to discussion and suggestions, because some people plant trees, you know, on purpose, the saplings, others obviously are very clearly just growing on their own, and they add to the nuisance look of, you know, the appearance of a property. So trying to determine or decide, are we going to cite these people for weeds and trees, or are we going to leave the trees alone, or, you know, so we're still trying to wrangle with that a little bit. Did you have anything to add?
No, it's, we're wrangling, and we welcome your input.
And this is probably still a work in progress, in terms of, there may be further clarifications and additions over the next three, six months, year, as we find to it.
I doubt that people are planting saplings against foundation, we all know that's not good for anybody's foundation, so. Definitely don't like to see that.
Do you have anything to add?
Any other discussion?
Is there, if a person, where is this destruction supplies?
Yes.
If a person stores their scaffolding on their trailer or their trailer outside of man, what's the, where are you defining that?
Well, that would, I would assume be like a home-based business, it depends on what the property is zoned, and it depends on where it's being stored, if you're saying it's on the truck and far out the street.
Well, I'll give you an example, I'll give you an example of my house, I have, I have 10 sections of scaffolding I store on the front of my garage, or coming up, but they're clearly visible from the front of the garage. So is that a violation or not a violation?
I'd say as long as it's neat and hung, you wouldn't have any problems, it's not drawn any, you know.
Well, well, this states, though, it's either during the construction or remodeling of a structure, but shall not be kept or stored longer than three months outside, so if that's something that you want to change or delete, that's, this is the time to kind of talk about that.
I think there are some people that neatly store stuff outside that is fine.
I do, too, I think, I don't disagree with, I think there are people that do store things outside that's neatly done and everything, weeds are kept down, and I don't think there should be a problem with any, any violation.
Well, we can rewrite this, or delete that object, or, yeah.
Find on like what need we-
In an orderly fashion, or, yeah.
Like the weeds right around the, you know, objects and stuff like that, probably in that piece, this or that.
I'm sure we can, like, sometimes kind of clean that up.
Hold off on this one, too, until any changes made.
I move, we end table, ordinance 95, ordinance, ordinance chapter 91 to nuisance ordinance.
Second.
Call it.
Testori?
Yes.
Copy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Kinley? Motion here.
Do we have any other items?
I have some things, yes, under my report. Just so you know, this Thursday, they're going to be drilling holes over at Plumb and Van Buren, trying to find that water leak, so, you know, we'll see what happens, but hopefully we'll be able to find it without having to tear up eight inches of concrete, so I'll let you know as I hear. I have distributed the latest, this was as of this afternoon, on the garbage and recycling survey, I think we have total 220 on the original survey, about 59 on the follow-up. I didn't see any radical changes, either in the new or the old. We have a meeting on September 8th, it's a pre-RFP meeting, where the waste haulers, contractors are invited to come, and we'll have a meeting, if anybody shows up, to answer their questions, mostly about, you know, the city and how things operate.
What day was that, Sue?
September 8th. Who are you going to ask me what time, I just can't remember. I can give that to, um-
Is that an official council gathering?
It's actually in the RFP, it's still the time, I'm sorry.
Is that an official counseling gathering, we can all be there?
No, I have not published it. That's for the contractors and the staff, I mean, I guess you're welcome to a time, but yes, if you all, you all show up, that would be answered.
You just can't discuss it.
You can sit and listen, I guess, yeah. I'm sorry?
We can be here, we just-
Just can't be here for-
We just can't only discuss, you know, we're just-
Right.
Ask questions.
I've received four RFPs on the MPDES engineering firms, so I'll be evaluating that per the criteria that's within the RFP, and making a recommendation on who to move forward with, because we want to get those plans done and submitted by February, March.
For?
The MPDES permit. And the bid was advertised for the Prairie Ridge Detention Center, that was bid last, or advertised last Friday, the bid opening is September 15th, they'll have 90 days to complete, and a nine-month maintenance period, which allows them to go back and make sure that the seed, or grass, or whatever they did to restore the property is, is complete, before we actually finish paying them. So hopefully we'll get that done before the supplies. Call it in the go right now.
Has, has the garbage thing gone from recycling to refuge, or is it still a recycling program?
No, it's still-
Still, and still includes the weeds and brush pickup?
Yes, in the RFP, yes.
Grass weeds. There's, I've got a few questions on it that's been asked. Is there going to be an exemption for somebody who has residence and a commercial building who uses the same container all the time?
I don't know, these are things that we can negotiate in the contract, depending on who, who selected, or, you know, even before you select one, you can ask that of any and all of the contractors.
Well, I guess, I guess it's kind of a city thing, isn't it? Is, are the commercial, people going to be required to use the same order?
No, this is residential.
So this is residential only?
Part of the RFP, if you looked in the bag, it does ask the contractors if they're willing to submit what they would charge either a non-resident, like somebody who might live right outside the city limits, or a commer, I believe it's commercial property- live right outside the city limits, or a commer, I believe it's, commercial properties, uh, what they would be charged to participate, but that is a completely voluntary question.
You think this will lead to a total ban on burning?
That's up to you, I don't make that decision.
I've, I've been asked, and I've told people, you know, uh, like your, your fire, clean wood, obviously we're not going to bang something like that.
You, you wouldn't have to do that, you could allow something like that.
I think what it's going to, to get rid of is the weed.
I, I think that was the biggest concern, I've had questions about that. So if this happens, are we going to be able to burn our roofs?
I think that's a completely separate issue.
Well, there wouldn't need, there wouldn't be a need to burn these if we're, if we're paying the hauler away.
That's one argument. But some people may not, well, I agree with that, you know, they'll do it now.
There's a lot of people that don't want to participate in this at all, so, you know, we really got to do all of that.
I know a lot of people that do want to participate in it, though, too, so I think it's a, it's a key and slip.
This is kind of like, this is kind of like co-op thing, this would be a great business opportunity for somebody to just co-op this.
Co-op, what do you mean?
Well, it's pro, provide, provide a, say everybody comes to your business and wants to buy it recycled, and then you just handle it from there, that's a business opportunity. Anyhow, I'll listen to some of the questions I had.
I think the whole thing about this is, and it kind of disturbs me, this is not about, everybody thinks it's about recycling, it's not about recycling, recycling is an option to what we're trying to do here. We're looking at just a unified universal garbage pickup. If you want to recycle, that's part of, if you don't want to recycle, you don't have to recycle. Nobody's twisting anybody's arse, nobody's putting a gun to anybody's head about this thing. And we're, we're, we're purely in the planning stage, we're looking at this, this isn't past yet, but it makes something better, it makes it look like it's past, it's only in effect within ninety days, nothing's going to happen yet, it might not go into effect for six months, eight months.
Well, we may get the prices back and they're too high.
They're too high, sure, yeah.
Or that may change as well, I think we need to add that conversation on September eighth, is some contractors, I'm not saying any, but some may say, it's not worth the money to us not to recycle. So if, if they get the contract and the, half the town says, I'm, I'm going to take the can, but I'm not going to recycle, it may not be worth the money to them, I don't know. I'm just saying there's a lot of different options out there that we won't have the answer to until after.
Totally wide open. Totally wide open.
But you have to consider, you know, the people that have been doing this, because this is absolutely front to the free market principles, to have a government agency step in and, and tell you who you are, who you're going to use. I mean, we got, we got a nice sir here, and he may have to lay off a guy or let a guy go if he loses all this property, all this business. And these other companies are coming in and bidding on this, if it's profitable for them, why haven't they come to us prior to this to do this, to provide this service?
Well, I don't think the recycling is profitable, Dave could probably, cardboard is about the only thing that's making money, am I correct, besides aluminum?
Excuse me. All of the various products, I wouldn't say they're profitable, the cost saving in disposal of the certain things that are recycled is the important part. They, uh, you're paying so much per ton, let's say, to dispose of normal refuse, if your recyclables are mixed with the normal refuse, it's all added together, all accumulates weight. So your, your recycling primarily is offset by a savings of this ultimate disposal cost, proper disposal. Take the recyclable items that may not be worth much as a commodity, but you're not paying to get rid of them.
Thank you. That's all I got. Anybody else got anything?
One thing to keep in mind in reference to your free market comment is just that there are cities that actually provide the service, and so, you know, I, I don't see a big difference in either the city providing the service itself or going out, and this is the free market, either you compete or you don't, you're given the option to submit. I actually extended the submittal time to allow the smaller companies to have the time to put the RFP together, so it's just another way of looking at it.
In days gone by, we did have one trash hauler at one time, when garbage pickup started to be a thing back in the early seventies roughly, and somebody here in town picked up on it and did it. It didn't work out for them, because maybe way to conduct the business and everything, and finally they had to get out of it because of age, and, uh, I think age, and I think, I think the owner died, I think that's why, I'm not sure if you did or not, I think that's why you got out of this, because that happens. Long before you, Scott.
Well, the, the free market applies to the citizens, not to the government, it's free market for us to choose somebody. I'm talking about the citizens, unless, we need to have some public forums on this, if we're going on the floor with this, we need to have some people, some chances for the citizens to come up and actually voice their opinions on this. The survey is nice, I understand that, there's a lot of people that haven't participated in it, so we need to have several opportunities for people to come up and voice their opinions on this.
That's up to the council office.
That's on my job.
I do like, I do like the fact that in the RFP, that you have the ability to have your junk picked up twice a year at your curb, which doesn't leave your junk sitting behind your garage or whatever until it's that time. And that was one thing that I run a hidden line on.
Well, perhaps we can, um, get the RFPs returned on the twenty-second, see what they look like, and then if the council decides you want to have a public forum, then we can do that, too. Because then we'll have the information. Because if it's too costly, we'll probably just, you know, toss it all in.
I have no doubts it'll save money in the first couple of years, it's after that, if I was going to be here for a couple of years, I wouldn't do it, but.
Well, this is a, this is a three-year with two-year option, so it goes like two five years, you're going to lock in. But we'll see.
I've been through this in other cities, where, where they came in and they bid low, and then five years later, the rates double.
Well, five years, we don't have to go, if it doubles, we can say no.
Well, by then, by then, whatever other garbage service you put out there, they going to be there to be competitive.
Why? I mean, why would you put something out of this, it's wrong, would it not be available? Present a pose? I mean, I think it's still available.
Uh, any other non-tenant items for the other business?
Move the, move the B and J room.
Second. Pollard?
Copey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKibbin?
Yes.
Testor?
Yes.